MSMA conference on October twenty seventh. The conference was the twenty seventh and the twenty eighth. I was not able to go on the twenty eighth. But I went to a number of great workshops. One was called Supporting Class Teachers in Uncovering Their Blind Spots. The author of the book Uncovering Their Blind Spots, Hedrick Nichols was at the session. And she talked a little bit about the new book that speaks to building bridges, fostering a more inclusive school community. The state is offering a book study for anybody that wants to be involved in this, for educators, your board members. And if you would like some more information on this, please contact me and I can get you going in the right direction. The state will provide you a copy of the book. And I think there's some other financial reimbursement, like I was just, things like that. So if you're interested, this is.
And just a quick question on this, Georgia. If they're providing reimbursement, my assumption is that there are some sessions maybe in Augusta that people would have to travel to.
I think a lot of it, I think some of it is virtual. March second. Yeah, I don't know if they've laid out what January one or February third and March second.
Okay, so there are three dates that might be that virtual or you would travel to.
Yep. The other session that I went to was twenty twenty two Legal Year in Review. There was just a lot of discussion around court cases that have impacted education. And I went to timely, a collective bargaining session as we are getting ready to go into bargaining and agreement. And just thought I would attend that one to see if there were any any new information that I could learn from it. And I did walk away with some new information. Jeff Ladd also was there. And so I'd like to just give her a minute to report out while we're talking about this on the sessions that she. Okay, first I'll start with a quick story that what I've learned when I taught down south is that my children there said, I can't listen as fast as y'all talk, but I'm going to talk fast because I will. I did attend both days. And again, like Georgia said, it was a matter of, oh, my gosh, which one? This one or this one? And we actually strategized before we started about who was going to go to which session. I attended four sessions, both days. For me, the highlight was, there were two. One was communicating with the public on difficult issues. And along with that was what to do when people challenge materials that you have in the school. Both of them extremely informative, a lot of, and these were presented by people who are living this right now. So very timely, very interesting and a great step by step. Do this, do this, do this. And they talked about the pitfalls and things to, things to remember to do. And it fell back time and time again to look at your policies. Start, let's stick to that, keep the motion out of it and just stick to your policies. Also attended the collective bargaining with Georgia. There were several others. And then the very last one was one called Left to Their Own Devices, Debunking the Myth of the Digital Native. And these two presenters, I don't know if you're familiar with them. Sean, you may know who both of them are. Jonathan Warner and Kate Meyer. And talked about, they had some amazing resources. Of course, it was all digital and talked about how we really need to teach children and young adults how to manage the technology. And no, they're not natives. And two amazing books, which I will chat with Abby and Sean, anyone else that's interested about later if you're, if you're interested. But very well attended. And personal note, if you stay until the end of session number one, they give out each of the vendors that are there, give out prizes, but you must be present to win. And when you're present to win, you'll win a set of Apple AirPod Pros. And they're in my bag. And also a Bluetooth speaker which sits upstairs. So that's what happens when you stay till the end. So if you didn't get a chance to go this year, I would encourage you to try to make it next year. There were a lot of board members there taking advantage of that. They had really, they had really good.
It's gorgeous.
Yeah, keynote, the keynote speaker was really great. I saw him the day before at NSSA. I would also like to share, we had our open house last week on the night. And we had a tremendous turnout. I think we had right around a hundred and fifty show. We had Maggie May here, so everybody would meet our therapy dog, who will start coming into the building after Thanksgiving break. And so we're working on that. She was exhausted and she, she decided she needed a nap. But she was super, she was super sweet.
What breed is it?
Me, what was that? It's a bullmastiff. The, and I, I just really want to commend the staff. Staff did a tremendous job in presenting academia all over the building. There were so many things actively going on. Abby had some things going on in the library where kids could sign up to get their library card to the public library, amongst other activities going on. There, there were, I don't know, step displayed up here for parents that have questions about that. You don't know what that program is, that's our social emotional curriculum. We, we had our three D printers going in the building. And it was just, it was amazing night. Our, our outdoor classroom was all lit up with LED lights and the kids and Seth could go out and see that. It was dark, but they, they got to see it. And so just, it was just really, really, it was really, really nice. We haven't been able to get together, I don't know what else, in a long time. So it was nice to be able to welcome the community back in. I would also like to update you on the COGS grant. And I apologize, I cannot tell you what that acronym stands for, but I spoke to it, I think a few meetings ago. There were four or five districts that have been working with the Franklin Police Department, the Franklin County Police Department in applying for grant for up to, I think it was up to around four hundred thousand dollars for safety and security measures, additional safety and security measures that can be put in schools. And based on what our needs are as a district, would be based on what we would get for funding or would be prorated based on our needs. And there, there may be some cost to the district. I don't know what that would be yet. It depends on what we decide are the priorities. But Seth and, we did get this grant. We were awarded three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So Seth and myself and Sean and Jeff will be meeting with the team on Friday, Friday morning. So I will keep posted on how things go. I did meet with Chief French, Police Chief French today. Seth and Sean and I met with him to maybe determine some, have a preliminary discussion about some things that we could do to ramp up security or add some added security in our building. So we do have some direction, I would, in that. Yes.
What about like CCOs, Superior, Law and Order, these for vendors?
Yes, that we, we're going to be, we're going to be roping them in to the discussion. And Sean actually is already working on this. So yeah, based on. Based on, on where we end up and what those.
Some guys law enforcement looks one angle, but standard security looks different angle.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, and a very timely discussion with, as you all know, with today's news about all of the schools that received.
And I'd just like to comment, Georgia, that I appreciate your proactive stance of getting out ahead of this ten school active shooter business and letting the community know what, what the school was doing in response to that. Because you were on top of that information. I know it was a balancing decision between sharing and potentially concerning parents versus not sharing. I think you, you made a wise decision and I applaud you for that.
Thank you. So there'll be more to come on that, I'm sure. And I'll be happy to report out on it. Another update that I would like to give you, and this is an update from Mrs. Savage. Recently, we passed a medical administration policy, which included the lock cell or Narcan administration in the building if needed. And the next step was training. That's part of the policy. And I'm reading that these are her words. We initially had only standing orders from Rangel Family Medicine that covered the school nurse. After researching and informational sessions, we had decided on a collective, a collaborative agreement that would allow trained unlicensed school personnel to administer Narcan when appropriate. This is the same type of agreement we have for epinephrine for those with unknown allergies and anaphylaxis. Ashley McCarthy from the Healthy Community Coalition came last week. And I'm happy to say that there were seventeen staff that were trained. And doses of Narcan were given through state program to those who wanted them to have on their person. And doses were allocated for us to have here at school. It was a powerful and enlightening training that will benefit not only our staff when they're in the building, but as members of our community. If anyone would like more information or has questions, please feel free to reach out to Lindsay.
Danielle had a question in the chat. Who is trained? Is it Lindsay who's trained?
We all were, well, we're all trained now. There are seventeen staff members that were trained in the building. So.
And do all seventeen of those folks have Narcan on their person or available somewhere within their classroom? Is that learning, understanding or?
At the time of the training, there were twelve doses available that went out. There's more doses, I think, coming. And, and so, yes, these would be doses that, for the people that were trained, these would be doses that they would have on them. So if it ever needed to happen, not, not only in school, but outside of the community, we would have access to that. Jeff will have. But there will also be some housed in the building as well. And let's see, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Georgia. I appreciate that. Seth.
Yeah, Helica is not here because she's at rehearsal, I think, let's say Tuesday. So there, this is the last regular rehearsal, I think tomorrow and Thursday, full dress rehearsal. And then this weekend, that's a big thing going on, the eighteenth and nineteenth, Friday and Saturday, it's at seven P M and Sunday at two. So pretty cool, you got somebody on stilts in it. So it's a, I haven't seen much of the practice and I have to go away this weekend. I'm going to try to get to one of the dress rehearsals, maybe they'll let me sneak in to our Sunday. But I know the kids have been working super, super hard on that. They give it, they're also, people have time to spread the word and get out and see that. Just to echo, the open house was awesome. I'm heavily elementary attended. I think next year, we got to figure out some bribery techniques to get some of our high school parents in, like raffles or gifts. You know, it's, it's typical that by, they come in for the young and by the time their kid's in high school, they're like, yeah, we've been to the school, you know. So just think of some ways to get more. And it's always been like that. You know, you sit down in high school and you're like, and all the elementary parents are here. But that was really successful, all the great stuff going on. Needed a wonderful job, the outdoor classroom. First quarter has ended. We are already well, like a week and a half into the second quarter. This year is flying by. And somebody mentioned earlier at the workshop, portion of a learner at our next leadership team meeting. I'm going to pick dates for the, for the meetings, starting in January. There'll be four meetings and I'm getting more people interested. So I think it was a good decision to pump the brakes, wait for a little while. So that's moving along. Grade spans during parent teacher conferences. Some are going on this week, some maybe after, but they've all begun to have people in. Winter kids are doing that again. And we did get picked to be a competitive team. So actually we went two thousand or twenty five hundred, remember? How much did we win last year? Twenty five, twenty five hundred dollars we won last year. Yep, so we're a competitive team again, so that's awesome. And I just want to give a shout out. So today we were kind of short people. So I threw my hat in and I spent time, probably like two hours of my day with special education. I was in elementary class and then kind of like a one-on-one. And I just want to give a shout out to that staff. Like I hadn't, I walked by the rooms a lot, but I spent some time with them, like really watching how they interact with our students and the activities they do. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them. They do a really nice job. So it was eye opening for me. I learned a lot today. So that was, shout out to them for the work they do. Because I don't think it always gets noticed as much, you know. So yeah.
Thank you, Seth. I appreciate that. Okay, moving into the committee report, let's start with Kathy and policy.
Well, we had a policy meeting on November seventh. And there was an action items later on. A lot. Just, you know, moving into the next round of updates. And December meeting will be Monday, December fifth at three o'clock.
And there won't be a curriculum meeting prior to that, right Kathy? That's not until January?
We put off until probably the end of January. See how this semester went and what, what mostly Seth has accomplished. And what, what we need to do.
Thank you, Kathy, I appreciate that. Finance Committee, Chris.
Oh, yes, we had an exhilarating meeting as always. We did it at four thirty today, we were able to complete it in thirty minutes. But we are on track well with the budget compared to last year. And albeit the audit came in this afternoon, but we have not reviewed that. We'll be reviewing that at our December meeting, which will be on the thirteenth. All things seem to be going well. We got some reports in on a couple of things to do for adjustments for positions. And a couple of questions on those. And then we got an update on plus five on that there. And we're going to evaluate that during the budget season and figure out our next steps there. And other than that, I think Roxanne's doing an excellent job. And I think the administration staff has done well with good fiscal management. And I'm looking forward to a strong year here. And I'm hoping for our budget next year, we're able to keep things going in the right direction. Despite worldwide inflation and crashing financial markets and all those fun things.
We appreciate your leadership, Chris. You're giving your positive thoughts, no pressures.
Yeah, I said despite those, we're still doing great. We have a good plan.
I'm thinking, you know, it's going to be another two meeting process, Chris, you know. It's going to come out the other end with a one point something percentile increase and.
I'm shooting for negative, but we'll see. I'm just kidding. But in all fact, all serious. The, the work that was done last year on the budget is a testament to how we're performing now. You know, a budget is, again, where we've talked a lot about on this board, of being proactive rather than reactive. Nothing's worse for a finance committee. You get halfway through the year and you're scratching your head saying, where can we go from here in order to prop Peter to pay Paul and all those things? And we're not, we're not there. We have a staff that plans ahead, looks at capital improvements, looks at the things that need to be done. And you know, Jeff's got a few years under his belt in facilities. So he, he knows the six to eight to ten questions I'm going to ask and comes in prepared. With the position piece, we looked at, Seth did a detailed financial analysis and provided all the questions he expected where it's going to get asked. And you know, when all that stuff happens, things are able to go smoothly. And I think we're moving in the good direction. And you know, where we can, we want to be able to trim down where we can so that we have more for the student educational experience.
Okay, moving on to facilities, Deborah.
We met Thursday, November third, we meet from four to five. And welcome to attend. The biggest topic on our discussion list was the proposal from the solar energy. And at this point, the group, I'm just going to read what I wrote here. Much discussion, after much discussion among the group, it was decided there's still so many unanswered questions about the proposal, including cost of the district, what it's paid upfront, what are potential additional costs, how much of a savings to the district is possible? Where and when and where would the district see those savings? How is snow removal handled? Where are the batteries stored? What if the district decides down the road, a lot of wants this technology? And that's it in a nutshell. We, it is the recommendation of our group at this point that we just continue to research. I was providing the list of current and operational projects in the state. And there are several schools. So I will reach out to them and kind of get their feedback to answer some of these kinds of questions. And we will keep bringing it up as we have more information. So it's a work in progress. Middle school quote, we received one quote for the cabinets. Another one, they've got Jeff, had received information from one vendor and was waiting, waiting on resend from the second vendor. The wall construction piece has gone up to bid. Some of the fire safe countertops will be available. And it looks like those temples installed in June of twenty twenty three once is out. Sewer system right now is working effectively. The maintenance crew is on a, is very proactively checking it, making sure that it's doing what it needs to be doing and has a plan in place before things go bad. Another, on another water related issue, Seth had brought up the issue of the town flushing the water mains. And between ten thirty and twelve is just not a very good time for that to happen. It limits the water here in the school. I have a call in, have not received anything back. They do not put a contact and hopefully I'll have some information. I know when I came down the hill yesterday, four eleven, and the firefighter at the bottom of the hill was gushing away. So I don't know what that did to your service yesterday, but.
Which now we're on our own, so we seemed okay. Didn't notice a slight reduction though.
So still, again, still waiting for a call back from them.
Thank you.
Deb, if I can be of assistance with that, let me know. I am the chair of the water district. But we are, there's a significant amount of flushing going on because of the new pipe work that's been put on Cross Street. There's been a lot of discoloring in a number of different businesses and owners. So we had to do extensive flushing over the past month. More so than has been done in recent years. We're following the guidance of main world water and all those pieces. But definitely Alan Ethan could probably, we can talk to them about adjusting if you're having some water flow issues during that time.
I can send, I can take care of that tomorrow.
Yeah, so one thing we might be able to do is put a pressure tank in where the water comes in the building. And it won't matter what they're flushing. So I'm just going to get a price on that. That might be an option. And then doesn't matter what time they do it, when they do it.
We don't have a reserve tank right now.
No.
Yeah, we should have.
It's a good idea.
Gym floor has been all resurfaced, surface looks great and ready to go for the winter season. Sprinkler system, sprinklers have been inspected, everything passed to improve that. Jeff did or is going to attend some software training on the TESGO, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a software that runs speech back system. Sean, Sean and I went.
Yes.
So we have fun days.
Yeah. It's funny, Sean was way more excited than I am. He gets that play a lot better than yours, Jeff.
He just mowed through it and I was constantly like, Sean, back up for a second.
Seth, you're smiling.
He was, I saw her that Friday, he was all pumped up and you were like, yeah, two and a half.
Yeah, yeah, no, I enjoyed it. And Jeff and I definitely know how to navigate it. And I think I know how to navigate it better because I had to teach a little and we worked together and it was good. We, we did a bunch of labs, like scenarios. And the next piece of it is really navigating our own systems. We have a, a site specific training with Siemens coming up to navigate our own specific graphics in building. But the software was, was pretty fun to take a look at.
Yeah, and the other two, two things on the agenda have already been discussed, the bus and also the emergency claim. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Yes.
What they were in our, since Bob's new, Bob, we did a, we put in a whole new software system. Our last system was probably fifteen plus years old.
Yeah, it's pretty old.
So we're able to do that with some of the grant money from the federal government to do a one-time upgrade and bring all the servers up. And we have a very sophisticated system that allows us, depending on the heating fuel, whether heating fuel is a certain price or wood pellets, we can choose which one to burn, also based on temperature as well.
Sounds like a casino to me.
The curriculum committee, Kathy.
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm a don't do it. We haven't met, we met back in October. We didn't meet November, we're not going to meet again until next semester, like.
And you did actually share that, Kathy.
Yeah.
So we get to read that on. Negotiations, we, the committee is formed. We had a, Georgia had a preliminary conversation with the, the teacher group this past week. We had to postpone the meeting due to COVID. Not COVID, sorry about that. And we're meeting tomorrow. Snow provided that we don't have to call school. The committee will get together at, did we agree, two forty five?
Correct.
And we'll get together with the group at three thirty, so. Okay, moving right along. Appointments, resignations, nominations and transfers. Annie, you're with us?
Yes, I do. So I have a resignation. Tommy Hazen has resigned. She was an ed tech in our special education department. And Dawn Hunter has been hired as her replacement. And pending fingerprinting and all of that, she will be starting with us. She's got extensive experience working with students. And so we're very happy to have her on board. And Carl Traptan as middle school boys' basketball coach.
Danielle Lemay had a question for the time of the meeting that you spoke about.
Negotiations.
Negotiation meeting.
The negotiations team is going to be meeting at two forty five and then we're going to be getting together with the teacher group at three thirty.
Danielle, did you hear that? I think she got it. Thank you.
So we'll move then into action items. The first action item, nine point one, is approving of an overnight stay for the eighth grade class trip to Quebec. Could I have a motion for that before we hear from the group that's going to be taking some moves to? So move second. Thank you.
Hello, thanks for having me. I'm going to apologize, I've like thrown out my neck, so I'm kind of moving like this. So if I look odd, that's why. So thank you for having me. It's funny, I was organizing to meet tonight and I opened up a file and I have pictures of my wife. Which is our senior class now, so it's been that long. But so for some background, those of you who may not know, because it's been a while. I'm Kelsey Orasus, I'm an eighth grade teacher. Or middle school social studies, but eighth grade homeroom teacher. And this trip started in nineteen eighty nine with Sherry Conley, who really wanted to open up the curriculum to some real life applications. So and really truthfully, part of the reason that I wanted to become a teacher was opportunities like this to travel with kids. I love to travel. So I was really happy to be able to continue on with this trip after she moved to another position. So the last time we did this trip was in twenty nineteen. But it's a three day, two night trip to Quebec City. It's the eighth grade class who goes. I will pass these pictures around. Like I said, this is the last time we went in twenty nineteen. You're welcome. So you just have a little bit of a sense of the trip. I did provide for you in the packet, an itinerary from the last time we went. I actually went to Quebec this past weekend. My neck was not like this thing looks since, so that's good. But it was, it was just, I can't even tell you how wonderful it was to be there. I just, it's such a beautiful city and there's so much history. Much to my son's chagrin. He was, he asked me to stop teaching him, stopping every two seconds to point things out. But it's just, it's such a great experience. So I was able to actually go to the tourist board and talk to them about what's changed since COVID. So I have, you know, pricing updates, certain things that are new since COVID, certain things that are now closed. So it was actually really good to be able to go and just kind of re-familiarize myself with the city. The trip is really intrinsically linked to our curriculum, with US history looking really at the foundation of what is now the United States, its relationship with Canada, how the borders were formed, the relationship going back and forth between the French and English, and the colonies coming to be. So much of it is linked with Canadian and the Quebec history. So before we go, we really focus heavily on that in our studies. Also, the geography, Bennett Arnold marched his troops right through here going to Quebec. We really follow that route as we drive through. I know, Chris, you've been on the trip with us before.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Yeah, it's, I love it. It really is. And really, looking at our standards, looking at historical transformation and turning points in history, I think that that really is kind of what the trip highlights. I have students, it is at the end of the year, so it's really, we're asking more questions to go June 7th, 8th and 9th, so it's really at the end of the year. But I ask journals to, there are students to journal every night to tie what we are doing back into the curriculum. So they're just really making those links throughout. Let's see, for chaperones, I haven't reached out to parents yet, but it's a trip that's definitely supported by our parents. We need chaperones. I think it's really important to have a lot of adults on the ground, learn a different country. We have young kids. So I would be asking for a minimum of four parent chaperones. We have 12 students in the class, so that would be one, two, three. More are welcome, but that number I got to for the hotel room. So we stay in a hotel room overnight, and I ask for a parent to be in every room with the kids. So children are really supervised 24 hours a day. So we have adults in the hotel rooms. During the day, we have day groups with a chaperone in charge of all the mini-day groups, and then we have one larger group. So there's really, it's 24-hour supervision of the kids. So I will, having approval, reach out to parents and talk to them about the process for crossing the border to make sure, and background checks here at school. So I know that there's a lot of preliminary stuff that would have to happen ahead of time. Typically, we fundraise for this trip. Because of COVID, the students really haven't had opportunities to fundraise, but it's a small class. I've been able to budget the trip in the past about $250 per student, and that includes room, the housing, some meals, and all the admission fees into all the events. So students typically are only really responsible for a couple of, one lunch, I'm sorry, two lunches and one dinner on their own. So really, kids can go for under $100 and feed themselves and take home a souvenir as well. So hopefully it's not too much of a impact on families. But we are entering into basketball season where eighth grade typically does concessions. So that's a great opportunity for fundraising there. We can typically make $300 to $400 a game. So I think with concessions, be able to get a chunk of the money they would need. And we had, you know, we have motivated parents to help with a couple of other fundraising events. I think that we can do it. I think we'll be busy. We do have a student council, an eighth grade student council, who are already brainstorming ideas what we can do for fundraising. We've already had a middle school dance, and they made 200, over $200 for that. So it's also a great opportunity for these eighth graders to, you know, learn the value of their work for this trip and have some accountability in the trip happening and making things happen using that student council process. So, and the safety as well. I have students carry little IDs with them with the dates of the trip and emergency contact info. Their school ID's in the picture. I do a parent chaperone kind of training before the trip and a student. We do a lot of in-class student travel tips. I really like to travel. I've traveled a fair amount in my life. So doing a lot of that with the kids too, to get them ready, just to be out in the world as citizens and, you know, of showing good citizenship, representing our school. And really, every time I do this trip, when I come back, I always have people just say how wonderful our kids are. So a lot of activities and also some downtime where they get to explore as well. But we do some history of Quebec activities, walking tours, the citadel. We go to Saint Anthony's Pre, which is a basilica. They do some artwork at a little copper gallery where they get to make their own reposé copper work. So we cram a lot in, excuse me. In those days, it's, it's just, it's the highlight of my year. So I'm here asking for approval for this trip this year.
I'm sure you addressed this when you were talking about your various fundraising activities that you're gonna, you're gonna work through over the course of the year. But my question is, does any student who wants to go will be able to figure out a way financially to go?
Well, yes. So it really, through that fundraising, it really covers, you know, most everything. And what we've actually done in the past, we have had years where we've had a couple of kids that it's been difficult for. There's the grandmother's purse budget school. We've been able to use money for to help pay for their meals. We've actually had some years where the kids have said, we have extra money in our class account. Let's just put it into a pool for kids who might need money. So we've never, that's never been an obstacle for kids to go. And they don't, they only need birth certificates. So there's no associated fee for getting a passport because they're with the school group, as long as they have a birth certificate, they can cross the border. So, yeah, but we've all, they really, we really have never had a kid who's not been able to participate and enjoy themselves that I know of. While we're there, we always find ways to make sure everyone's covered.
Questions or discussion, please?
If for some reason you've come up short at the end of the winter scholastic season of fundraising, will you report back to the board on your fundraising goal shortfall?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
If that happens?
Sure.
So that maybe possibly this can be addressed on a budgetary standpoint?
Thank you. And I had that thought. I was actually speaking to Georgia about that, you know, I think the value of fundraising, that it is a standing trip that is part of our curriculum that we do every year. So I have thought about, it's, it is a lot of work for the kids. So, you know, could there be more of a balance between budgeting and the fundraising? Thank you.
And the other thing is, again, encourage your parents that they may not realize, you know, an OUI from 20 years ago can constitute a felon in, in Canada, if you haven't done the proper paperwork ahead of it, can result in a two-to-three-hour bus delay and luckily negotiating a solution.
You do.
Yes, I would.
Yes, so, yeah, and I do, I do let parents know that, that really it's, it behooves them to contact the border, do all that upfront work now because we don't want to tell them.
So Canada has instituted, it was mandatory for a while, but they lifted it. They have a website now where you can put all the information in, in advance, including the proposed border crossing that you're going to go through. And if they have that in advance, you will get through much more quickly. Probably already noticed.
No, well, I usually just call them in the past, so that's good to know that I can just plug in.
It's all online, that's great.
That's great, yeah. We'll usually fax, you know, all the birth dates and all of that, but that's great if I could just go forward and do it. It's interesting, the Canadian side is always much more difficult than coming back through. Coming back through is always a breeze, but, you know, but it's good. I think it's really good for the kids to see the seriousness of crossing an international border. And, you know, it's no, it's no joke, really. We've, they've got on the bus, they, you know, come on the bus with mirrors before underneath all the seats and around the bus, and, you know, it's, it's good, you can see that. It's, it's a great life experience, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd actually like to make an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to propose that we would, the school would bug up to $1,500 if necessary to help with the, this program. Joan talked about a few months ago about the more we can do for these all-inclusive student activities. I think that would send a good message on that, that, you know, if for reasons of budget shortfall, we'll do up to $1,500, but obviously come back to us if you struggle more. But that would cover half of it. The students can try to fundraise to match the rest. It's not a, yeah. So that would be my suggestion for amendment, so if we could vote on that part for amendment, full motion.
Any other comments or questions about that amendment? All those in favor of adding that $1,500 amendment to the motion? Inanimate?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on the approval of the trip? Those in favor of approving this trip to Quebec? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, it's really, thank you, Chris. You know, with COVID, they lost all that opportunity, so that's a huge help. It's really nice. Thank you so much. I shall report back. Thank you all very much.
And I was with Jake.
Seven o'clock at night?
I had a comment.
Okay, approval, next action item 9.2, approval of an overnight stay for the Corus to Six Flags in Massachusetts.
So Erin is on, I don't know, oh, she's really on. There she is. Can you hear her?
Ken, can you hear me? Here's a little commercial for you. The show's Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We're in the middle of dress rehearsal right now, which is why I all of a sudden have a southern accent. So I don't have the paperwork in front of me. This is a trip that we've done about 12, 10, 10 times in the past. It's been approved the last three years, and we've not been able to go because of COVID. The money is there waiting for us to go. The trip is, we go down on a school bus, sorry, I can't find a good place for my laptop. We go down on the school bus to pick up vans in, I think the place moved to Lisbon Falls now. It used to be in Auburn, but it's now in Lisbon Falls. And then we bribe vans to Agawam, Mass. We, on the first day, we spend a couple of hours rehearsing in a conference room of the hotel. And then we hang out at the pool and do all that sort of stuff. And then the next day, we go to a high school in the surrounding area. Sometimes the only time these kids will ever get to perform on like a big, actual, real stage. So it's kind of fun for them. And then we perform for judges, and they score us. And we don't know how we did until later in the day. So after we finish performing, we go to Six Flags for the rest of the day and hang out and ride roller coasters and have fun. And then in the afternoon, there's a big awards ceremony at the picnic pavilion, and there's trophies and awards, and all the other schools are there, and it's a big deal. And then the next day, we come home. So questions?
Did I miss the dates?
June 1, 2, 3.
How many kids are going?
I think I have 19.
Okay. It's a large group.
It's a pretty large group this year because we've been trying to go for so many years. And I have quite a few chaperones. I usually like to have one chaperone per hotel room so that I don't have to worry about it.
How many males do we have?
How many male students?
No.
Chaperones, I think there's only one. So there's one male chaperone that's in charge of maybe, I think there's two male chaperones in charge of maybe seven or eight male students.
Okay.
Joan, you had a question?
Well, I wanted to say, first of all, this is the kind of field trip that I'd like to see, where all the students participate rather than a select few. I did have some questions about the chaperones, and I guess it sort of applies to what you're saying too. It says here, each room will have one chaperone and three students. I don't know, does that mean that the chaperone is sleeping in the room with the students?
It actually isn't working out as one and three, it's one and two. So the chaperone has their own bed. And some of them, the chaperone is their parent. So if that's the case, then it will be the, the mom and child will sleep in the same bed in the other bed as the other two kids.
I also had some concerns because there were a lot of boys and very few male chaperones. That's kind of, yeah.
I think, I think that there will be two male chaperones in the end.
So what will the ratio be for boys to male chaperones?
I think, I, I don't, again, I'm sorry, I don't have the paperwork in front of me because I'm at dress rehearsal. I think that there are six female chaperones and two male chaperones. So I'm pretty sure the rule is like one chaperone to every 10 kids or something like that, or eight kids. So we have way more chaperones than, than we need.
How many males do we have going though, boys?
Probably one, two, four, that's except, maybe eight. I'm gonna guess eight.
Okay.
It's a guess.
Okay.
Around eight.
Chris, I was just gonna say, Erin has done this trip a ton of times. I've done it twice with her, with my kids and with my daughters. And it's well organized, it works really well. In fact, I think one year, Owen Sinclair won the award for best male vocalist from the whole festival, which is pretty amazing. And Sue comes down, I think, usually to play. I'm not sure if she's there at this time, Sue Borco. And it's, it's a great, it's a great thing for the kids to get together and do. And it's quite an experience, and it is a long drive. And they do, and they raised all the money I had to tag. Is this some of the programs leaning money, Erin, from the Black Fly tournament? Is this all the leftover money from the Black Fly tournament?
Yeah, it was the last Black Fly, I think, was in 2019. And that was when we raised the most amount of money and that, because we were gonna go in 2020, and then we obviously couldn't. And then 21, there was no one. And then last year, we were going to, and then somebody got COVID, I think me. Maybe got COVID right before the trip. So we ended up not going. Okay, so girls are sharing beds and boys are sharing beds? Yes. Okay.
Danielle.
What?
Danielle Lemay.
Oh. Georgia.
I, I would just like to share, and I've had this discussion with Erin already. And we also noted in the proposal that I have some concern about the transportation and transporting vans. I know this has been done for years. But I'm concerned about transporting 19 kids in two vans. Erin was gracious enough to reach out to see what a charter bus would cost. And it's outrageous. It was around $5,000, and that didn't include the, the, you know, accommodations for the bus driver themselves. So I'm just, I, although I signed for this, I am, I am leery of putting kids in vans. I mean, you know.
I will, I hear you loud and clear. I've done this trip a couple of times. They do multiple stops in those pieces. The vans, I think, are probably the same company I helped Erin find years ago to save us some money on that there. They have licensed vans that are used for multiple trips. It used to be gyms there on me, on, in Auburn there, but they've moved to Lisbon Falls now. But they're all the code. We used them for the senior trip when I did the trip with Sonia to Cape Cod. In order to drive for the school, you have to have zero points or negative points. So I was always in the accompanying car next, next car, carrying equipment because of my left foot. But, so if you, in order to be a driver, you have to be an ultra-conscious driver for those pieces. The capacity of those vans are up to 12 or 13.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, is it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's getting 15 passenger, of which they only put eight or nine. So kids are spread out. And if it's Rowena and Erin, I've both heard their, their supervisory voices, and I feel that, I feel that they can adequately handle it, in my opinion. But I appreciate your concern.
I'm sorry, Erin, when was the date again?
June 1, 2, June 1, 2, 3.
Okay, and we're taking vans?
Yes. We're renting vans out of Lisbon.
Okay, so we don't have bus drivers, correct? We obviously couldn't transport with our bus drivers.
We could, but then we would have to pay for the bus driver's hotel room. We'd have to pay the bus driver, and it would be overtime because it's on a weekend, I think.
And then we would have to pay them off hours too because they're gone, obviously. So it's cheaper for us to pay for vans? I'm just clarifying.
Yes.
Okay, so that is why we take vans?
Yes.
Okay.
It's cheaper and.
Danielle, I really, if your packet of information in the box by the door is a copy of the entire application with all of the information.
Yeah, I, I just couldn't make it, Mary. I lost. Yeah, I, I just couldn't make it, Mary. I lost two cows tonight, so.
Things that, you know, for future reference, all of that information.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I grab them when I come in for every meeting, but I'm not there. So I'm just clarifying with Erin.
I'm really sad about the cows.
I, I am too. I've had a real, really, really hard morning and night, but it's okay. Like, it's farm life. I just, I'm not used to it yet.
So I was gonna just really quickly speak to the vans. Like, I had told Georgia, the first time I drove one of those vans, I was kind of nervous. Having fifteen almost adults. I mean, I took the, the high school kids last time we went and the other driver had the middle school kids. So I had fifteen, you know, grown children in the car with me and I was like, oh gosh, this is gonna be so hard. Like, I've never driven a car this heavy before. And it was, it was, it was fine. I mean, the vans are super nice, nicer car than I'll ever own. Uh, and it was, it was so easy and smooth and safe. I even pulled a fat Uy, a legal one, um, to get to a, a hotel and it was, it was easy.
Okay, good. I just was curious as to why we didn't take other, but that makes sense.
I mean, the other, the other reason is because two of my chaperones wouldn't be able to go if we took a bus and that being me. I wouldn't be able to, I can't ride on a bus for longer than a
I feel you. I cannot either. We had to stop in, you know, Ontario and get me some Dramamine, a lot of it. I understand that.
But, uh, I just wanna clarify, that as the question, a point of clarification. Uh, are the, do the drivers come with the vans? When they're contracted to fit the vans? And then we have our people drive.
To parents.
Okay, so so then the people who are driving vans would be, uh, you know, for lack of a better term, vetting appropriately for this?
The drivers are me and Rowena.
Well, we're all.
And, and obviously those, you come with insurance coverage and all of that necessary stuff to, to be in a position to drive those vans?
We're covered under the school. We have, we have
Under the school.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve an overnight stay for the chorus to Six Flags in Massachusetts in June? Joan, second. Chris, okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along.
Thank you. Don't forget to come see Big Chris Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
What's up with your reaction?
Thank you.
Production. Can you hear me?
Uh, she might have. Not sure.
Let's go to item number nine point three, approval of the overnight stay for the senior class to a Celtics game.
Hello, Jan. Kate Filbrick, um, for those of you who I haven't gotten a chance to propose a trip to yet. Um, so I'm the senior class advisor. Um, I know in the last couple of years have been minimal trips for, um, senior class. One of the things we talked about, um, as a class, instead of going on a longer trip or at a distance really far, uh, was to try to keep them like an overnight trip and kind of in the New England area. Um, and not wait until the very end of the year to do that. Um, to not wait until the very end of the year to create that camaraderie again, uh, among the, um, senior class. Um, in the past, the feedback that I've gotten was that, uh, students have a great time on their senior class trip if they're in May or June, so that's like right before they go out the door. Um, so there are several different ideas that we took a, a vote, um, on Google Forms and a majority of the students wanted to do smaller, several smaller overnight trips um, or day trips in the New England area. So the first one would be on Monday, uh, November twenty-eighth, which is very soon. Um, to go to a Celtics game in Boston. It's at the TD Garden. And, um, in order to do that, we would leave, we'd come to school on Monday, leave around ten o'clock. And, um, on a school bus, go down to the train station in Portland. Take the Amtrak down. It comes right into North Station at TD Garden. Um, go to the game and then, um, the late train comes back into Portland at one AM. Uh, so we would take the school bus and the bus driver from school to stay overnight in Portland. It was a conversation that we kind of had with the bus driver and, um, Jeff to kind of provide the safest opportunity. We thought about potentially coming back that night, um, but just didn't feel that would be the safest option. Um, so we would return, um, back. So we'd be missing part of Monday and all of Tuesday. Um, but again, this is broken up as opposed to an extended period of time in May or April, trying to balance out, uh, vacations and, you know, AP testing and all the end of the year sorts of things. Um, just to give you a prequel of what will be proposed in the coming months. Um, students would like to go to Jay Peak in Vermont, um, as an overnight, which they have, they could be able to ski and go to the indoor water park. You're not coming? That's proposed, what will be proposed for March. Um, and then we're also looking at going, um, to the coast of Maine to either do类似于 fishing or, um, a sort of adventure.
But none of those are related to the motion at present, correct? The request at present?
The, well, they're related and it says that they're part of the senior class trip, but the other
Understood.
Other
This evening.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Yes, Chris.
Just had a question. Are you saying like the Clarion, the hotel right near there or?
Honestly, I priced up the Hampton Inn by the mall and it's like a hundred and seventeen dollars a night, which is very cheap. So I can look at the Clarion too, but there, I mean, that's
The only reason I'm saying that is, is because I know per contracts and everything that bus driver could go down, drop you guys off and come back, it would be four hours. Then drive back down the next day to pick you up and back. It'd be eight hours of bus driver time versus twenty-four plus a hotel room. All right, just throwing that out. I know you have a budget. And if you save the Clarion, if you call ahead, they, they do group thing. Jen used to work there and I know that they do a medical rate and they do a couple of other rates. You say you're at school. That you might be able to do it and then you can literally get off the train and walk there in about five minutes. So just a suggestion. That's all. Not trying to
No, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Joan, I just think it sounds like a, a lot more fun and, and more coming, getting together and separate fun activities.
We talked about actually, when they were freshmen, I talked with the kids about splitting them up and actually taking a trip, an overnight trip each year. You can see where that went over the past couple of years, but, um, I said, well, you have the opportunity. It's, it's your, your class, your trip, you decide, but um, they essentially, it was about two thirds, well, probably a little more than that. People decided that they wanted to, to do it.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So may I have a question to review overnight stay for the Celtics game on Monday, the eleventh twenty-eight to Tuesday, eleven twenty-nine? Chris? Okay, thank you, Kathy. Uh, all those in favor? Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor? Okay, have fun. Sounds like fun. Okay, moving on to action items having to do with policies. I'll turn it over to you, Kathy, and I really wanna form a video.
Yes, I do. The, um, no, nine point four. No, AC, yeah, ACA, 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 A, ACA, A dash R. That's not here. ACA, A is not here.
Yeah, it is. AC, it's number nine point four. Isn't it ACAB dash R?
No. Oh, yes. It's just not in the right order.
Right.
So ACA, A dash R. ACA, A, or ACAB? AC, ACA, A dash R?
Yeah.
A, B, A dash R is not.
That's just
That's not, that's something else. So, um, but GCFB, we can prompt those all together. They're all required. And they all, um, according to statute, have to have this privilege added to the sentence. Which I can tell you all the, um, talk a lot about it. We're not all loving the language, but it's by state statute, so we don't touch choice in the matter. And, um,
And this is discrimination on the basis of hair.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Hair style. On the basis of an individual's ownership and a protective category, which restricts including race, including traits associated with race involving hair texture, Afro hairstyles, protective hairstyles, such as braids, twists, and knots, colors, etc., protection. So, but the new language is this hair thing. And they, they want us to add it.
Motion to approve.
A discrimination issue and it's state, and it's, it's statute for like action. So we have no choice. So, okay, so. So I need a motion to approve or to accept policy ACAB dash R?
Motion to accept modified language.
What?
Motion to accept modified language.
Yes, okay. Uh, can I have a second for that?
Second.
Any other questions or comments, Chris?
I just had one comment. Wendy did a great job sending this out to us all in advance so we could read it over. The only issue is, is that at the top it says current policy with revisions in yellow, as Kim does it. But they were scanned in black and white, so it's a little tricky to read the, the darkness. Just a minor, just a minor thing, but
Could you read it or was it almost impossible?
Well, it just, with the darker things, all I'm saying is that I know, I think our copyists have the ability to scan in color, even though it might take a little more volume. It would be great to do that just there. Just a, just a, just a footnote, that's all. But I appreciate getting everything in advance so I could read it.
Yeah, okay. And I also appreciate the fact that she's now doing these standard yellows so that we don't have to read the policy.
No, it's fantastic.
Yes, yeah.
My only question is Heidi Geary still our affirmative action coordinator? She is not. Our, uh, ten and nine officer now is calling, uh, K. So that
So that needs to be revised.
Where is, I'm sorry, yeah, where is that?
That's in several different places.
Okay.
But it's page two of thirteen and then wherever else that person is listed, so that, that needs to be updated.
Question.
So we gotta fill that
Yes, Chris.
I'm sorry, Bob.
I'll just have a question. Uh, so I noticed that, um, several of these other documents really are dealing with the same thing and the, uh, it appears to be identical language modification. So to that end, um, is it appropriate, uh, Madam Chairman, to, uh, approve each one individually? Or can we approve them as a package?
I think we already approved them today.
I think we approved them as, as a collection. That's why I said about, you know,
Just to find a clarification.
Because it's all the same state statutory language.
Okay.
Nine, four, nine, five, nine, six, nine, seven, nine, eight, and nine, ten.
Got it.
Kathy?
However, ACA, A dash R is not the same.
I'm sorry, where Bill, where, Chris?
ACA, A dash R is not the same language?
Student discrimination.
It's a full paragraph that's been highlighted to be approved. So I'm just saying I just, I, that's why I'm saying if we're going to take ACAD dash R is also as a different paragraph. Also, I mean, if we're gonna say the identical language, it's really only four, which is AC, ACA, A, AC, AB, GC.
Give me the numbers, Chris. That's nine point four.
No, nine point five.
Nine point five, okay.
Nine point six, nine point seven.
And nine point five. Okay, so I need a motion then to accept, to bundle and to accept nine point five, nine point six, nine point seven, and nine point ten to adopt the statutory language into those four policies. And I'm motion to that effect.
I see.
I think we have a motion on the table already.
We have a motion on the table already.
So can, either Matt So Bob can, I, I propose a friendly amendment. You accept that?
Yes, I'll, I'll amend my motion to, uh, uh, cover nine, five through nine, ten. And then we'll deal with nine, four separately, Chris?
Yes, we'll do nine, four, nine, nine.
I just wanna make sure, full clarity.
It's, it's
I'm also, I saw Harris thought it is not nine, five through nine, ten. It's nine, five, nine, six, nine, seven, nine, ten.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nine, five, nine, six, nine, seven, and nine, ten.
That's the proposed friendly amendment.
Got it.
Proposed friendly amendment.
Five, six, seven, and ten.
Any other questions or discussions? You bet that's modified. I appreciate that. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. So fast. Okay, Kathy, oh, then we'll do ACA, A dash R separately. Okay. Which, um,
Well, that one and, uh, that one and BBBBA have the same That one and ACABR, those two.
Which are what numbers?
I think that's, it's four, five.
Okay. Four, five, and they have the paragraph that they got.
We put the paragraph So
Yeah, they're, what they've done is they're picking out of the formations.
Yep.
It's the hair. It's hair. It's still hair. It's, um, ACAB dash R and ACA, A, A, D.
Of which we only have two out of twelve and two out of thirteen of the other eleven, ten pages.
So we need, we need a motion, now we need a motion for nine point four and nine point eight that have the same language about discrimination. Is that correct?
I am covered. ACA, A, A, dash R. All, it is the same language that was there, but was added, we added to it. Instead of, it says which four students includes race. And then the added language is traits associated with race involving hair texture. The other language is the same as the previous paragraph.
You added sentence.
It's, it's just, it's just the way it's put together looks different. It's the same.
Yeah, but it's the same, but for all of them. The only thing that's being added is that sentence about hair. Okay, so I
So Kathy, what are you proposing in the motion?
I think we just do all of those. ACAB, they're all required and the only thing we're adding is the sentences about the hair.
Okay.
Um, to each one in different places in each one, but ACA, A, ACAB, AC, ACA, A, dash R, and GCFB are all the ones that have that added language. No other language has to be changed. Just as that added language. And it's, we're putting it in because the state tells us we have to do that. So that includes then, as far as I can tell, to, uh, the other one we have left is BBA, dash R and BBBBA.
We only have nine, four, nine.
We still need to vote on
Nine and eleven.
Nine and eleven.
We can vote on the others first.
Yeah, so we need to vote on the others first, so.
We got the motion.
Yes.
So we did, we did the first four.
We did the first four.
Four, five.
Right, so let's just add, I need another motion to adopt nine point four and nine point eight. Which includes language in state statute. May I have a motion to that effect? Thank you, Joanna. Second. Thank you, Johanna. Second. Okay, any questions, Chris?
We, while we're here, so we don't have to come back, let's change the affirmative action officer.
Yes.
We didn't do that for all of those, though.
So that.
Those are the only two that I've seen.
So that's a friendly amendment.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to propose that we put it in Georgia, who is that?
It's Holly.
What's her position? So it's be Holly Hagan, affirmative action. And then the extension will change in the email. So be updated by administration to Holly Hagan is my proposed friendly amendment.
Thank you, Chris. So all those in favor of Chris's friendly amendment? All those in favor of adopting 9.4, 9.8 and 9.10 that has the, the statutory language? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so Kathy, we have two left.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I just bring one note to this back, just so you know with Robert's invisible, if a friendly amendment is made and there's no opposition, the friendly amendment is proposed to the person. They can choose just to accept it. It does not require.
It doesn't require a vote. Okay, I appreciate that.
But just so you know, that's what, that's why it's called a friendly amendment. Just propose it. Kathy says, yeah, that's fine, just like Bob did. Then it's now the amended motion.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay. So moving on, so I'm not any more confused than I already was. BBA dash R school board bylaws.
Yes, that, um. It does change the date. And this is to make it coincide with, I think it's BBA. So that instead of a board member may just be dismissed from the board, I think that is, instead of four, three consecutive meetings with. We're just changing that so it's.
Consistent.
It's consistent with the other policy. So it's just that changing four to three and that, so.
I have a motion to adopt the change to make BBA dash R consistent with our policy regarding absenteeism from board meetings so that that will be three consecutive meetings instead of four.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second? Any questions or discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Attendance constitutes virtual and face-to-face and or face-to-face.
Correct.
And we, thanks for asking that, Bob. And we do have a policy that you can now participate in board meetings virtually and you can vote virtually at board meetings.
Plus be approved ahead of time by the chair.
Yes, so I need to be notified.
Now, section 2D, there is a typo in the second line. It says co-zero chair instead of C-O chair. So one may want to revise that.
Friendly amendment?
Sure.
Well played.
All those in favor?
As a member.
Okay, we have one last one, Kathy.
BBA, again, has to do with the board's presidency. And in MSMA, we, our policy didn't have number six. And it wasn't in MSMA's policy. And we decided that it's a good idea. We love it. Absence, an excuse for any of the problems each other can consider. An excuse, an excuse, absence, not an. And et cetera, illness and so on. So that's, that's new language and I'm revising to that.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Just note, Jeff, I found a table. And that one, you got that? For any discussion or questions, oh, in the first line, sentence, it should be and instead of and that. The bottom, first, first line. Any other questions or options or discussion groups? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy. We got through that. Okay, before I ask for an adjournment recognizing that our next meeting will be on the 13th of December, I'd like to extend a very large thank you to Johanna for providing us with delicious sandwiches and salads for our workshop tonight. And cookies, and cookies.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
May I have a motion, Peter?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? He's on you. Okay, thank you.
What's up?
We're done.
Oh, we're done. That's great.